Testing. One, two, three. Frank, can you hear me? Okay. Welcome to the December 7th Planning City Council Study Session ARP Proposal for Planning Parks, Neighborhood and Revitalization. We welcome our panelists today, Catherine Rosdick and our Assistant Mayoral Director Renee Lemus and Paul Lichtenwasser and City Council colleagues. Thank you. You may begin. So, Mr. President.
I apologize for being late. It was an accident on 21st and 22nd.
No, that's fine. Lori had mentioned that Jim had wanted to say something to us but couldn't stay for the entire meeting. So, because he's not here, I was wondering if we could go into the ARP planning first.
Yeah, he wanted to talk about the budget first because he had to leave.
Right, but then he's not here.
He's probably stuck there too. First responders all over the place from car accidents.
But we do have a lot of other people here who are part of the ARP proposal.
Right, so.
And I think to respect them, they did not know that we were going to do something.
Right, so let's begin the ARP. Go ahead.
Please leave your name, telephone number.
The car point up on the screen, I think is, I'm not sure if you can see it. I know Mayor Schumber, you had your hand up and want to ask some questions, sir? Can you hear us? You're muted, Mayor. Just want to make sure he put his hand up pretty quickly, so. Okay, he said. So just one. Oh, there he is. Mayor, did you want to say something?
No, I think we can get going with this. I'm fine.
Okay, I'll, you want to, we want to proceed. Okay, we'll go and get started. I'll start with my, I've got a PowerPoint presentation. I, thanks to everyone who's here in person and online. We do have a number of people here to support the different initiatives. If you have any questions, they're here to answer any specific questions. There's a lot of information we'll go over tonight, so you have, everyone's been provided a packet of more detailed information. I'm sure you haven't had time to look at it, but it is available for you. I also emailed all of this to you in advance of the meeting. So please, if you, if there's other questions that you have that we don't get answered tonight, feel free to look through that information. That might provide some more insight into all of the requests. What I would like to do, Ms. Shaw or President Brzezinski, is go over, just do briefly everything that we're going to talk about tonight, and then we'll go into them in more depth, item by item.
Kathy, do you have a copy for the council people who will be coming in there in the audience?
New council people, I have extra copies, yes.
Yes, I'll give them on that.
Okay. Jasmine already has one. All right, we'll let everyone get seated. Okay, so tonight, this is, um, we want to go over a number of different initiatives. This is where, really where when we talked about early on, it was only months ago, but it feels like it was years ago, when we talked about the framework, the original framework of how we were kind of as administration seeing how ARP funding could really help realize the planning work that has been done over the past four years now. And so really, the bulk of what you're seeing tonight has been years of planning work. Working with our neighborhood groups, working on neighborhood strategic planning initiatives, doing the research, talking to hundreds of people. And we've also, through that work, we started some intermediaries called, one of them is the Groundwork Erie Trust. So we'll be talking about that tonight as well. And then finally rounding out the discussion with a request for funding to really, for me, this, this is one of the most exciting, most exciting initiatives that I think we can undertake as a city, is moving into the digital age. It's, we are woefully behind on our technology in every aspect of the work that we do. And anyone who's tried to work in City Hall or with City Hall understands and ever has worked with other municipalities of a larger size or of a similar size, know that really our software systems are antiquated. We found this most evidently in the work that we were doing in the code office, but we know that it's pervasive throughout every department. So we see this as an opportunity to bring the city into the 21st century and provide an extremely high level of city services. I spent a little more time on that because that one may be for some of us the more difficult one to understand because it is, it goes beyond my technology skills. We do have people in the audience and on the call who can help explain that. So I'm going to start with ones that are a little bit easier for us to digest. So just to give you a summary of where we're at to date, and we have the Mayor Renee and Chris Groner and A.J. from Public Works, we're all here. We can talk about the different initiatives that you've already supported funding for. But this just kind of gives you the breakdown. I think this was the first time that we've been able to see. And I'm going to go, do we have the PowerPoint, Frank, that we can show on the larger screen? I see it. I don't know. Oh, am I supposed to share it? Why don't I share my screen? Okay, it's not like I've ever done this before. Okay. So, speaking of technology, here we are. Okay, so, let me go back. So this is what I was talking about. All the buckets that we're talking about, it equates to $9.1 million in funding request tonight in these buckets. Five million for parks and public space, parks and public space improvements. You can ask a number of questions about will there be money for this? And we believe that this bucket is where that, that may answer some of your questions. Neighborhood revitalization efforts, these are two major initiatives that the city has been working on. Digital infrastructure just went over, and then the two, the two initiatives that will be run in partnership with the city of Erie, which is Groundwork Erie, which is, it's a, it's a trust that's already been established by the city a lot. And it's been a two-year creation in the making. And then finally Love Your Block, which is a new initiative that you just recently saw some contracts come under. So now here's the, what I was talking about. The total, the total request. I wanted to give you an update on where we're at today. Everyone has, you don't necessarily have, I don't, yeah, you do have this in your packet. So $20.7 million for economic development and community development initiatives. Those are the funds that you approved that would go, be administered through our Economic and Community Development Department and the redevelopment authority for the city of Erie or Race. So those are, those mostly include things that the grants and loan programs that Chris Groner's staff will help and Chris and Deb's staff will help administer, and then the minority contractor program for Race. And then housing, $14.6 million. That is all of the housing initiatives that Race will administer on your behalf. Public Works, a total of $12.8 million has been requested to date for infrastructure needs, mostly dealing with stormwater needs. Public Safety was recently brought to you at $14.1 million to work on the number of initiatives that they have moved forward. The last, the $8.2 million is what we'll be talking about tonight. Revenue replacement of $4.5 million has already been moved to council. And then the $975,000 is also what we'll be speaking to tonight. That's roughly, I think it's about $75.8 million. The remainder is to cover administrative costs for the programs over the next couple of years. So that's kind of where we're, where we're at. We've got the buckets, the buckets planned, and will be deployed in this manner with modifications as we, as we learn things over the next three years, so. So what I would first like to talk about is Groundwork Trust. Groundwork Erie is a, is the 22nd trust that has been launched by Groundwork USA. We do have two of our board members, two of our executive officers are on the call. Connie Walker is our illustrious chair, and the vice chair, Michelle Butler, is also on the call, on this, on the meeting virtually. We have a number of board members in the audience, and they are here. So Jeremy Blazer and Athol and Heather Kasper, I hope I'm not missing anyone, also sit on the Groundwork Erie Trust Board. This is a new initiative, a new, even though we've been working on it for two years, which is a partnership of the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Park Service, who run the National Groundwork USA Trust. Many of you have either sat in on these meetings or part of the presentations as we developed a feasibility study. And now we have finally launched the trust. We don't have a staff yet, it's still early on. But we do have a board and its functioning. The city's commitment in order to prop up the trust required us to commit $35,000 over the next four years. That would typically come from the general fund. We see the work that the Groundwork Trust is doing is a great fit for ARP funding dollars, and it also gives some relief to the general fund. So we're requesting that the operational commitment that's been given to the city just flow through the ARP funding rather than the general fund. So that's what you have on your, that's what we're discussing tonight. The Groundwork Trust, it's, they're going to be doing a number of initiatives. Mostly it's centered on working in the neighborhoods on environmental, physical, the physical, environmental aspects of the neighborhoods. Some trusts work on brownfields, some work just on creek restoration. What we had seen in Erie as we were developing this concept is our, our work on blighted properties, mostly housing, and particularly in the East Bay front, which we'll talk a little bit more about tonight. In the East Bay front, we saw just such pervasive abandonment and blight. There was someone sitting in the audience when we were talking about East Bay front, and is there some way that we can address this blight? But instead of leaving vacant lots scattered throughout, could we turn it into a park or a park system? Is there some idea of putting an asset back into this community rather than just scattered vacant lots? And so we said, let's, let's try to conceptualize what a park might be instead of that. And someone in that steering committee who's also in the audience says, well, the city can't take care of the parks that they, they have now. How do you expect them to take on more? Groundwork Erie was a great resolution to that because what it does is it provides seed funding for operations of bringing in young people. So these would be high school children, kids, young people, who would work on a green team and a youth corps. So not only would we create a high school, a team of high schoolers, but those who have just graduated, graduated high school and don't, won't go on to college, this is a workforce development. They will actually work with, as a, as part of Groundwork Erie to maintain these green spaces. So we said, look, let's backfill this, create a workforce opportunity here, align it with National Park Service and the Environmental Protection Agency, who's now not only providing us technical assistance, but seed funding to get this launched. And we're also taking care of some of the issues that the neighborhoods receive, but also some of the issues and service, service provided by the city. We saw it as a, as a win-win for the city. That's what Groundwork Erie is. In a nutshell, it is a launched trust, and we do see this as a good fit to go ahead and fund it instead of taking it from the general. Before I move forward with that concept, we will talk about East Bay front a little bit later. Is there any questions you have for the trust or the chair or vice chair or other members who are here and have been at the table from the very beginning developing this idea?
Kathy, I wondered, you talked about, you know, this would, the young people working this would be people who didn't intend to go to college. But I do remember when we heard from some of the other Groundwork programs, I think it could also, though, spark an interest in furthering education in environmental jobs. And I think one of the ones that, that just jumped out at me when we had one of those presentations was, you know, somebody who then went into be trained to do water quality inspections. So I just think it's important to let people know it's, this could be a beginning, not an end, but it could serve both purposes, helping people to be trained, you know, post, just post-high school, but then also go on to additional career training is one of the things that I think was really impressed me when you had one of those Groundwork webinar.
Correct. This is, and you bring up a good point. This is really designed to put youth in service to their community and give them valuable training opportunities. Not only is this, are, will these be projects that, these are paid positions, young people. So this is, but they are working in their neighborhoods, improving the neighborhoods in which they live, learning valuable tools, but also part of a national network. So they will be exposed to all of the other trusts that are working throughout the nation and the same young people who are doing this type of work in different communities. The, the opportunities really are endless, and it's, it's not a lot of, a lot of funding initially to get it started. So we're, we're very excited about this work and have dedicated a lot of hours to getting it done right.
Kathy, would it just be city of Erie residents, you're saying, within a neighborhood, the students? Or would they be, can I just see who, who's out there and see who can be hired?
It is, it is designed to hire city residents.
Okay.
So that's the whole purpose. It's, it's really a cycle. It's to, you know, bring youth who are in disadvantaged, underserved neighborhoods, give them job opportunities, but also see how they can be part of a larger movement to improve their neighborhoods.
Great, thank you.
And just so I don't miss anyone, I have a hard time kind of managing this. Connie Walker, Connie, is there anything that you wanted to say on behalf of, of the trust? You can just speak, unmute yourself and, and speak.
I think you've done a wonderful job representing who we are and what we are, what our ideals and goals are. At this time, I, I don't have any, anything additionally to add. It's just that we're, you know, that we've just come together as a board. We are working to just forming ourselves and who we are as, as our own entity and bringing the skills that each of us have to offer and sharing them with everybody as we, you know, develop these foundational things like the bylaws and hiring an executive director and so on. So, thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Thanks for your words. Okay, any other questions about this particular, I'll move on. And then we can always go back, and then you can always call me. So the, the next initiative is the city's a service, Love Your Block. This is, this is a really fascinating step that the city has taken in order to partner. You'll hear the common themes, right? We, this partnership with our neighborhoods and our neighborhood organizations is something that we hold near and dear to the work that we do in, in City Hall, and, and so this was an opportunity through Johns Hopkins University. Eight cities throughout the United States were selected. You can see on the screen the eight, Albany, New York, Duluth, Minnesota, El Paso, Texas, Jackson, Tennessee, Salt Lake City, Utah, Shawnee, Oklahoma, and White Plains, New York, are the seven other municipalities that were selected to be a two-year program. This is a two-year program. It comes with seed funding to hire a fellow. So the fellow who is in the audience, we'll say hi to Gretchen Kerr in the back. This is her second day, so I'm like, yeah, sure, you should come to city council and present. So, but you'll see, yeah. Well, she's gonna, she, she might be at the press conference on Thursday, so we're gonna, we'd like to baptism by fire in City Hall. But the two-year program, we get the fellow for two years who's going to be solely dedicated to this work. She, she will be full-time. It usually comes with two vistas. It's a little challenging to find vistas this time of year. We believe we might have, we have one, uh, but we won't know that until January. So we're hoping a vista in January and a vista in July. You've seen our vistas, you heard them, Erin Carey was our first. Crystal Otworth was a force to be reckoned with. And then Megan Bennett, uh, was a, was a vista that we've also had. They provide a ton of capacity for initiatives like this. So along with the fellow, the, it comes with $40,000 in mini grants. And though we're developing how those mini grants will be deployed, uh, but they will.
Come on Kiki, put your hat on.
We work with our neighborhood groups and residents themselves. The, the goal of this initiative is to not only work with the neighborhood groups that we know very well and we have worked well together, but is, this is specifically designed to get into those neighborhoods that we don't hear from, that don't have an active neighborhood group, to organize those residents around issues that there, that they need addressed around light. We don't hear from them, we want to hear from them. And that's why we have extra people at the table to go out to areas like East Avenue and work with them, um, to, uh, and bring funding along to help. So it's not just us saying we care, but not only we care, we have some, we, we, we have some funding to go along with it. What we want to do is to take the initial investment by cities of service and double it. ARP is, is a, is a great, uh, tool for us to increase the funding. So we're asking for another $40,000, which will be deployed over the next two years. And we'll go out and we'll be administered through the same type of mini grant program. Um, so now we have $80,000. That may seem like a lot, it actually, anyone who's done this work knows it's not. So what types of programs? It's going to be, uh, programs vacant lot activation, vacant lot cleanups, public art projects could be part of this. It could be helping with, uh, minor home repairs to the exterior of buildings, um, exterior, exterior of your homes. It could be helping with lights on initiatives. Security cameras could be a part of this if people want to use that for their, their, their match. So there's a number of ways that this funding will be deployed. It's still yet to be determined, uh, how exactly. So you'll see this again once we have finalized it, but we would like to have, uh, additional dollars because we know the need is, is great. So that's what the 80,000 or the $40,000 is, is looking at. We're also looking at ways to formally acknowledge our neighborhood groups, um, and, uh, make them part of the decision-making process of what's happening in their neighborhoods. So that's another, that's what that registered community organization that you see on the screen means. So we'll be working on that. Are there, are there any questions? I'm sorry, Mike, you don't, uh, it's a little bit easier. So mini grant program.
On the registered community organization, because we do have, we have places that don't have anything, but then some that have like a neighborhood watch, but it's not the step up to, you know, a, a best or a, our West Bay front or SSJ neighborhood network. So would like neighborhood watches, is it a step up to become a registered community organization then? And you know, there's some that have nothing at all, you know?
So, um, that's exactly what we're thinking is, is that we need to know what is the group that needs to be notified when something is going, when the city is doing something in their neighborhood. And that could be a neighborhood watch. It could be a very well organized group of neighbors. Uh, it could be a full functioning neighborhood nonprofit that we have. So it could be any of those. This is actually a model out of Philadelphia that Philadelphia uses. Um, so we, we stole the name a little bit. It will be, uh, it will be modified a little bit. But what we wanted to do is we see that as a, as a missing piece of the puzzle. And it's much easier for us to be able to go to an organization and say, we're thinking about, uh, making this major modification to your park. We want to get your input. Will you work with us to get that input? Or if there's a major, uh, major, uh, commercial or development that's occurring, there's an industrial brownfield project, we want that, uh, we want to formally acknowledge who that is, that we need to reach out to. That makes sense? Okay. I'm probably talking the most about the least asked, the, the least of, the least funding. Any other questions on, on that? We, there's still a lot to be determined, but you'll see the, that happen over the next two years. Okay. Moving on, this is, uh, the largest, uh, the largest request that you'll see this evening. It, it's one we've talked about, uh, often, this idea of participatory budgeting, which you don't necessarily see on, on the screen. But this, uh, we're requesting $5 million that will go into improvement of public spaces. It's not just parks. So this could include, uh, it could include streetscape, it can include, uh, street trees. Yeah, safe routes to schools. We've gotten some interest from United Way on partnering some additional safe routes to schools. So what does that mean? That means crosswalks, pedestrian signals, um, signage. Those are the types of projects that that could mean, additional things that keep kids safe when they're going to and from school. So, uh, $5 million is not a lot of funding. We're going to use that to le- leverage other dollars. Parks is one area where you can, you can find grants a lot of the times. What we're, what we have a hard time finding is the match. Well, this gives us the match for those grants. This is a big undertaking. This one scares me the most because, and I know AJ's probably sitting back there going, what are we doing in parks? But it is, it really, we will be extremely impactful. When we're out working in neighborhoods and you've, you, you hear the same thing, I know you do. When we're, we're working with our neighborhoods, it's, it's almost inevitably parks rises to the top of issues that they want to address. Or there's a street sidewalk. Incredible challenge. So what we want to do is allocate this money, spend the next, we will, four years to deploy it all, to go after the additional funding. And use a, what we call participatory budgeting process to determine what these projects will be. Participatory budgeting process is a way that you, that the city will interact with residents to determine the priorities. So they essentially get to, in, in some cases, play city council member. They have to make the decisions, where do we want funding to go? If you take funding and you put it in, um, in one park, that may mean that other parks don't get that kind of funding. We haven't figured out how all of this will work. We'll work with city council. You'll see the, the, the process and you'll approve the process for participatory budgeting. We just want a, make sure that we have funding in place to do, to do this work. Uh, but we think it's incredibly important. It really kind of plays off that, that registered community organization, how incredibly important it is to bring residents and the citizens who live in these na- in these areas to the table to help plan how this funding is deployed and then act on that plan. So we have, and then what you have on your screen, what that, what, uh, what that looks like, that's our qualified census tract. So we've talked about that. That is essentially where, uh, nearly every dollar of ARP funding, even beyond this $5 million will be, uh, will be invested in, from housing to economic development, to everything that we're, that's being requested, pretty much everything that's being requested tonight will all be within qualified census tracts. If you're, if you can't orient yourself like, uh, you know, like everyone else can, like, like a lot of people can. Essentially is, is 26th Street is the southern boundary. You, you kind of dip out there a little bit, but mostly 26th Street to the Bayfront, uh, except for Frontier Park, which is over on the left-hand side. It's a, it's a big geography. I think we talked about it last time or the last time I, I spoke to you. There's about 53,000 residents, if I remember, that live in the qualified census tract. And that's a pretty substantial, um, substantial number to serve. Every neighborhood organization that we know exists in a, in, in a sort of a high capacity are, will serve qualified census tract neighborhoods. So it will be, um, it will be, it will impact those that we've been at the table with in, in many ways. And I know that there's many neighborhood groups here, um, that, uh, I think would benefit by this. We, we talked about social pinpoint. Social pinpoint is the platform that will use participatory budgeting. And I'll show you, this is an example of social pinpoint. Uh, it's very engaging, it's pretty easy, it's user-friendly. We'll basically put up pictures and say, you know, things like, what is it you want to see here? Pick what you want to see here. And what's nice is all of that will be reported back to you. You will see a dashboard of what's, what people are saying. So it's not going to be me sitting up here and blathering on all night long. It's, you actually see these charts, these graphs, word clouds galore gets us to, uh, very excited. Uh, so you'll be able to see what people are saying. We know that there will be people who don't have access to computers. So we see ourselves going to neighborhood groups, using a laptop, sitting down with residents who don't have access to computers to get this information. That's why I said this one makes me a little nervous because I know how much work it's going to take, but it will be so worthwhile once it's done. I did want to take an opportunity, um, to, uh, if anyone, um, either on the call or in the, in the, uh, audience, uh, wanted to speak on this, uh, feel free to do so. Or we can have questions, but the, um, the podium is, is yours if anyone wanted to speak on behalf of how this funding might impact, um, your neighborhood. Let's see who takes the bite. The one, ready, one, one. If you wanted to speak now, you can, it's not, you can just sit. Wait, are there any questions? Okay, I see no inviting. If, uh, what questions would, does the council have on this initiative? I see Jim, Jim staring at me, it's not enough Kathy, it's not, it's not enough Kathy. I know Jim, it's not enough.
Just back to the, because I, I, you talked about the qualified census, uh, tracks. So I think if, but you haven't said this yet, but I think that means that we would have to get this done this year, get the, the proposal approved. But then it's going to take longer to roll out for the participation, right?
Yes, that, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Liz. The, 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 the issue that we've expressed and we're, we're very concerned with is qualified census tracts. It's on the screen today is what HUD recognizes. In 2022, the two qualified census tracts that are essentially east and west 6th Street to the bay, these two that if you, hopefully you can kind of see, they are removed. They're no longer qualified census tract as of 2022 because of the different demographics that has changed. We know the need still exists and we have been, at least been given the understanding, the guidance is still evolving, uh, from treasury, given the understanding that if we obligate the funding in 2021, that all of these census tracts are still eligible. And that's what we really are very keen on. If you know, if you think about west 6th to east 6th, everything north, there's a lot, there's a lot of need in that area. Uh, we saw it with housing, we know, uh, with, um, uh, with our parks and our public spaces that this, there's, there's, uh, I can't, I haven't done the whole, I think there's at least one school. Uh, Emerson Gridley is located in there. I'm trying to think if there's others. Safe routes to parks, there's, there's need, there's downtown areas in the east and west Bay front. It, here, uh, Bayfront East Side Task Force is almost completely eliminated. It is completely eliminated with this move. And that would be devastating because, uh, Jeremy is here tonight. Uh, I can tell you, he, he's not, he's not finding work anywhere else. There's still a lot of need in that neighborhood. And for it to be removed from the opportunity to improve the public spaces and the parks in there would be tragic. So.
So what do you think is driving the changes in the demographic? To the point where it wouldn't meet a, a qualified census tract? What particular statistics triggered that?
That's a good question and I don't have, I know that Jack, Jackie Spry, who is on the call, hopefully she's still here. I think she can answer that more, more, uh, clearly than I can. And I'm just, I see her. So Jackie, could you unmute yourself and, and, um, and respond to Mr. Keys's request? I know you had some conversation with HUD on this issue. Hopefully.
I'm sorry, can you all hear me?
We can, Jackie.
I'm a bit echoed here, so I apologize. So after we found out that we, we're going to have census tracts three and four removed, we called HUD and asked the question, those, those exacts, exact questions, Mr. Keys, and, um, asked them to clarify why in fact those census tracts were being removed. And the only explanation that was given to us was, it was based on the definition. And so, um, the, uh, we then, we then contacted the treasury department to find out if, if in fact those census tracts were removed, does that mean that the funding would not, we would not be able to use the funding in those census tracts going forward? And we have not yet received an answer and we've reached out to treasury now three times. And I'm not sure if we'll ever receive an answer on that. But from what I understand, uh, is that based on the definition, um, we, the demographics possibly have changed, but also that there were some, the, the census data. Um, and I know Renee has spoken about this several times. And I don't know if she wants to take, take that forward and, and explain that again. But I know there was some, some question i- in terms of the census data and how it was collected.
And Santa.
So I guess we still don't know the answers, uh, as far as the change, what changes are possibly triggering these.
It has a lot to do with the response rate to the census and the American Community Survey. Uh, we know from our work going door-to-door in the East Bay front in 2018 and then also in 2019 with the Count Me In campaign, that the need is great on both east and west Bay front. Um, and we know that there are, I can't remember off the top of my head, a number of different languages spoken in those communities. We actually, uh, worked with our new American liaison to get translators, interpreters to go into the neighborhoods with us so that we could get the surveys answered because we found that they wouldn't open the door. And so we had to, and, and so the census didn't have that. We, throughout the 2020 census, um, there were a lot of concerns about whether or not there was going to be an immigration question on the census. There were also issues with people not opening doors. Um, census, uh, takers kept reaching out to us to try to help them get data just counts about how many people might be living in a property because there were so many people not answering their doors. So we're going to be looking at that more closely here in the next few weeks, um, as the challenge, uh, process opens for the census. But in the meantime, you know, we, we know just from our own door-to-door that there's still a lot of need in those two, two areas.
Yeah. And what I'll do, Mr. Keys, is a follow-up, is I'll give you specific language in the, in the qualified census tracts that you'll be able to see how it's defined. And, and we'll, we'll see if we can't be a little bit more specific with how those numbers change for you. Any questions on, on this initiative? Like I said, this is, this isn't one and done. You're going to see a lot, probably more of this, you'll probably be sick of it over the next four years. Well, Mr. Renarski, you won't be because you'll be sitting in county cal, you'll be across the, you'll be watching, but you'll be sitting across the street. Mr. Renarski, you won't be because you'll be sitting in County Cal, you'll be across this, you'll be watching, but you'll be sitting across the street in in the courthouse. Oh, he had a, oh, there's a chat, okay, so his mayor, the census was grossly inaccurate, that is why. These two census tracks were taken off, we plan to challenge that in 2022, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Moving on, let's see, there we go, so the East Bay Front Greenway, the the next two items were requesting $3 million. And and right now, we we believe it'll be about a million and a half for these two initiatives for each. East Bay Front Greenway is a major initiative that was part of the adopted. East 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 Bay Front Neighborhood Strategic Plan that was adopted by the city in January of 2020. Right before the pandemic hit. This was the very first strategic plan that the city undertook in order to help affect their comprehensive plan area refocused. It was the Lower East Side, East Bay Front is the area that in Erie Refocused had identified, there were such. Pervasive blight and abandonment, make sure. Okay. The the mayor's throwing up some chats, I'll go back to that and just on the census, thank you, Mayor, I'll I'll respond in just a second, but. The the pervasiveness of vacancy and blight in 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 this part of the area, in this part of the city. Required action. Action that was unlike what you've done in the past, so it was the 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 suggestion was. Address the blight and abandonment through demolition like you have in the past, but instead of just leaving these vacant lots. And we 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 as a city has have done that over the decades. Instead of just leaving these vacant lots, turn it into a system of parks and active spaces. Well, what we went, what we did is we went into the East Bay Front Neighborhoods, we worked with our our neighborhood groups, so Bayfront East Side Task Force. Serve Erie was working in that area from East Six to East 12th. And still has a presence and Snoop's were at the table as we developed this idea and said, what is it we can do? Does this make sense? We went in with this this idea, but we needed to take it to the people who live there. And and see if it still made it make sense, and what we found through a very robust. Community engagement called the Summer of Hope, which is where we went door to door. July 2018 and talked to over 400 residents that that lived in this neighborhood. And we asked them, you know, are, what are your issues? And they all said blight, the house down the street, the drug problem that's happening in that vacant property. We have. Our children don't have things to do and we will not because parks are so far away. Particularly in that East Six to East 12th, I'll go real, I'll go back to if you want to see. Why isn't that, okay. The census tract, so the East Bay Front, if you can kind of see over on the right hand, look kind of in the in the area. The top is Nate Levy Park and that Wallace, the Wallace Fields. But in the survey area, there is, there's no parks and open space. And so a lot of the people that we talked to said, look, we we would like our kids to be able to go out and play safely, but. We're not letting them cross Sixth Street, we're not letting them cross 12th Street. It's too far away and we're, we feel it's a little unsafe for them to walk that that far, so we we said, okay, there, this does make sense, there is, there is an opportunity. We have identified through lots of research, robust research and and a way in which we can do that, we would attach and connect. Existing parks that are there in the north and in the south, Rossler Park and Rainbow Park in the south. Pfeiffer Burley, we would, we would create a system that links those with this idea of taking the vacant lots. And turning them into an active green space. It could be parks, but that's going to take, we're going to define what that looks like over the next. Few years with the residents, what do they want to see? What kinds of places do they want to see lighting sidewalks, trail systems? It's a big undertaking, but so we're asking for funding to go into this neighborhood and start that work. And that's what the East Bay Front Greenway, as I said, it's part of the planning process, it's. It is the the lead priority in the plan that you adopted in 2020. Which is what has given me the go ahead to bring it back and forth, it's what you do, right, you have this grand idea and a plan. But for the funding, it could move forward, now we think we have the funding that's appropriate to move this forward.
So. We've already. Allocated several millions of dollars for demolition of fight, flighted properties. Do you think you can work more closely with the other organizations who receive the funding in order to accomplish this without? In order to accomplish this without additional funding for demolishing more properties?
At this point. You will need more funding for acquisition and demolition into this project. The the funding, what we're going, and of course, you're, the the other answer is yes, we'll work with the Redevelopment Authority and their housing program. Part of this initiative, what you don't see on the screen, is we also want to go in and rehab the homes there, so you get double, you're doubling down on your investment. Not only are you taking away the blight, you're creating a green space, but you're also helping to rehab the homes that are that are also there. This is a major stabilizing, so that is where the the housing program, and that's my answer, I'm sorry, it's a long answer to an easy question.
Continue, I want to hear it all.
So the housing rehab dollars that have been given to race, we see that is where they're going to come in and make the most. Impact, but we will need additional funding for lot clearance. And the majority of this actually is going to go into the development of the Greenway, the space sidewalk repair. So sidewalks, not only just in the green space, but we want to get sidewalks, safe routes to to parks. So that we can make the links to Nate Levy all the way down to Rossler, it's not going to be, it's not going to be easy, so that. Sidewalk funding and pedestrian enhancements do take up a lot, a lot more dollars than you think.
Do you have a process for the rehab? Are people going to come to you or are you going to go with them, say, Ross?
They'll go through the Redevelopment Authority, so if you recall the housing funding that went. Not yet, no, we're taking that, so that'll be a couple of months, and yes, we'll bring them back to you and so you'll be well aware of, but the application. And when that's available.
And I guess part two of the the $3 million question, the transformed five acres of the Quinte property.
Oh, I I was going to go to that one.
Oh, you want to go to that?
Yeah, you, are you good with these, well, I mean, are you?
We'll let you keep going.
Okay, this is just, I wanted to show some of the data collection that we've done, so you so you get a sense of what the East Bay Front means. Hopefully everyone understands that's Holland to the Bayfront, Bayfront to the north, all the way down to, actually, it's 12th Street. To this, actually, no, sorry, 14th Street to the to the south, this is the level, some have seen this. This is the, we did do a property conditions assessment to determine where are the vacant properties, what condition are they in? And so I just wanted to give you a sense of the level of analysis and research that went into. The recommendations that eventually you saw in the plan that came before you, this isn't necessarily the properties that we've targeted, but this just gave us a sense of. How would we, how would we manage this, and this is six to 10th Street. Is what you see, oh, six to 12th Street, excuse me, is what you see on the screen, so there is, the orange and the reds are the unsound. Are very extremely poor properties, we're hoping some of those can be saved and rehabilitated. So I'm sorry, Parade East, if that's what you're, are you looking at the the roads? Parades to the Parade to the Bayfront Highway, six to 12. Is where the highest concentration of light exists. Okay. Quinte, so we do have Chris Gruners here, but I know Tina Mangene is is on the call, the. Who can help ask, answer some more specific questions about the process and the progress of this site. The site, as you may remember, was acquired by the County Redevelopment Authority for remediation, and they have received funding from multiple sources. To to demolish and clear this site, this is not an easy job, it is a very large site with complicated. That has to be. That has to be mitigated, mitigated, so five acres.
We're aware that a part of the fencing has collapsed over there.
Yeah, yes. They are now.
No, we are.
I was late because of the accident on 21st, which I was circling around traffic down here as I came over 16th Street, the good part of that fencing. Has fallen south.
Yeah, that wind is not kind with those fences, so we'll, we'll pass that along if they haven't heard it already, thank you for that.
We're aware of that.
When I first saw this this site before, well, before anyone started to to put it on their radar. I was, I was stunned that this still existed in in a city of this size, that its location. In the neighborhood, there are, there are, the better homes, housing development is right across the street, you have Booker T. Washington, that's also right down the street. This has been a plague for this community for far too long. It's not an easy, the reason it hasn't been done yet is because it is not easy, and there's plenty of people on this call, in this, in this meeting who can attest to that. The brownfield remediation alone is very costly and you've given funding in County to address that. The one, the 1.5 million is to actually put a park in its place. We've had many conversations with the Redevelopment Authority and they don't really see the site as viable for commercial or industrial development. But as a park, it certainly can be, and we've heard a lot of need in this community. For a park, and this will most likely be an active park, so you'll see lots of facilities. Potentially going into this, I don't know what those are, again, we're going to use the community engagement, we're going to work with residents, what do they want to see, what's the best fit? For this area, but.
Turn it, who owns it now?
The County Redevelopment Authority does own it.
Do we have an idea of asbestos or is it going to be an active park?
There's plenty, so I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Chris or Tina at this point, who can talk about. The horrific conditions.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak if. Am I unmuted?
Tina. We can hear you.
Okay. So was the question about the asbestos, is that what I heard?
It was general question about what really is all on the site that you have to deal with, asbestos, I know is one of them.
So the majority of the building. Was covered in asbestos from the roof. The exterior siding, all the windows. Every floor in that building, ceiling and floor and walls tested for asbestos, and it all had to be hand scraped and cleaned. They took out 20 dumpsters of asbestos. Three additional construction sized dumpsters of asbestos related materials, so they did a lot of work. In the basement, they took out. A number of totes full of asbestos, and we are checking a few of them now for PCBs. But we removed all the roofing, all the windows, all of the siding, so it is. Pretty much ready to go once we get those last few totes out of there, we actually had a. Pre bid meeting yesterday for demolition and we'll be issuing the bid packets within two weeks, so. Once the site is cleared, the building and the smokestack are down. We can then test the ground and determine what. What kind of remediation needs to be done at that point, but this was a massive job, the majority of it had to be done by hand. They had to dig a trench slash driveway just to get into the basement to pull everything out of there. The. The firm that we hired said, the gentleman is a specialist in asbestos removal, so this was. The worst single site he had ever seen with the amount and and quantity of asbestos. It really was a plague on the community and. Glad to be a part of it, being able to take it down, but. We will spend every penny that you and the county and the EPA have given us on this, and it still probably won't be enough.
Tina, I had a question, I I know that. It looks like, was it groundwork that one of the possible funds would be EPA Environmental Justice Small Grants Program, and. It certainly seems like this is also an environmental justice, or is that part of this, I mean. If anybody can argue that this is an environmental justice problem. You know, having seen little kids playing across the street from there, and that it's been there for so long, and the mention of PCBs is also. Pretty scary.
So we have an EPA grant that we used for some of the work here. Oddly, EPA does not pay for asbestos removal, so we had to pay for that out of the funding that the county had given us. But the EPA will pay for testing the ground, they will pay for the removal of the PCBs. So, you know, you've just got to juggle all the different sources of revenue to make sure that you can maximize and leverage as much as possible.
Well, first of all, I. Like to thank you for for the undertaking, it is a massive undertaking, it's just I. I have a little concern about the. I'd say. The plans for it, if you don't know what's in the ground yet, and we don't know, you know, how much it's going to take in order to. Remediate what's in the ground, whether. Park Place is the. Correct solution for it, once it's mitigated, and because it still has. Chance of stuffing the ground, stuff seeking outs of oozing, whether we, that's a place that we would. Like to put our kids, I, so it's just something to go into the air as a thought of. If not this, what what can we do, obviously. It being down and it being a green space or something else is obviously a thousand times better, but I think that that's something. We have to look at, if you look at reuse, whether we're going to get bang for our buck with, if we've got to spend another $10 million. In order to make it a park, you know what I mean, it's probably better as a green space.
And and you make a good point, and I think this is one of those projects where. We're going to learn a lot as we move forward and you, we're not going to spend the funding until we have that. That idea and concept in place, but what we didn't want to do is here we have an opportunity. To get it to the next level, to get it into a space that's that's potentially active, and. So we wanted to just get a guarantee that, yes, we'll move forward if this is the right course. You do make an excellent point, you never quite know what's going to happen with a brownfield and and what what you might find when you start uncovering it. In a lot of cases, though, parks and green spaces, so it could be inactive green space, but it could also be parking lots. If if depending on where that material is and where it can be relocated and capped, that's a good spot for. A parking lot for a park, so there's, I think there's ways that we can work around what they they find. I'm I'm hoping, and Tina can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hoping the entire site is not so in such bad shape that it won't be able to be. Remediated to a level that we can use it for some active, active space. So you're, but you're right, that's, there's, there's still some unknowns, and so what we're asking for is a commitment from the city is, as we move forward, there will be funding to. To develop it into a system, if it is just a green space, we're coming back and we're saying, okay, we don't need one and a half million dollars. You'll be asked to reallocate it to something else, that's how this will work, and it it works very well when it's an internal project like that, because. City Council has, you know, has control of where those, if that's, there's a shortfall, you know, you can reallocate it into something else, and we'll be monitoring that with all of the programs. And we'll be monitoring that with all of the programs, all 76 million is the progress. If we don't see progress on any of them, we have to rethink where that money can be spent before time's up, the deadline. Thank you.
If we do find bad dirt, so to speak, uh, Mr. Groner has found money. His group has found money in the past through federal grants and such to cover that. So.
Correct. So there, yeah, it's.
My concern initially when I brought it up was the dirty soil. But there is a light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, because we know that there are programs out there where we can get money to, uh, make it better.
So I'll kind of go back to the first entity that I talked about, which is Groundwork Erie. That is, that is a, a part of a national network that's funded by the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Park Service. So you can see the common themes of why we thought a groundwork trust in Erie would work very well. Not only did we want to develop the trust and the youth development piece of it, but we wanted a, a relationship with Environmental Protection Agency. So now we're on their radar. We're part of their organization now in, in a, in a fashion. So when we go back to the table and ask for additional dollars, they know, they know the city of Erie very well. Not only for the work that the redevelopment authority is doing, but because, but, uh, but also because we're, we're part of their network now. My kids always like to call me when I'm in the middle.
The coal plant, you know, we let these people, these big money people who own these companies walk away from buildings. And then we ended up holding all the bad dirt. There should be some way that we can freeze some money from the potential sale of those properties to make sure that the general public is protected from that. Lawrence left a whole lot of stuff over there too. We're going to find that out as we go along. That's why we put the ball field there. Everybody remembers way back.
These are all very good points. Yep. So, you're welcome. Is, is Frank, Frank, are you controlling the presentation now? I'm not sure what we're doing. Okay, here we go. I get a little. All right, here we go. Okay, so, uh, Quinty, so finally. Can I turn it? All right. The final, the final bucket. We do have a number of people at the, in the meeting tonight who can speak to this. And this is something that we've been working on. I don't know why we're working on everything for years and I feel like we're finally, we're finally getting it over the finish line. Maybe that's why I'm so exhausted. But, um, we've taken our time to really understand what the needs of the city are. On the call is, um, Aaron Brous. Um, he's with Esri, which is the, um, the nationally known, they're the, the leading edge, cutting edge, uh, organization on geographic information systems. And, uh, we also have our, uh, Public Works, A.J. Ant, Ant, uh, I can't, Antoli, thank you. Well, Chuck misspelled my name or mispronounced my name this morning, so I get the payback. And then also Andy Zimmerman with Code Office is here. They've been at the table along, uh, developing what this needs to look like. So just, uh, to kind of backtrack, a couple of, uh, uh, years ago, the Code Office is really struggling with this, how they do their work. Their systems are antiquated, their software systems, if they are software systems, I'm not even sure we call Microsoft word, software systems anymore. It seems like it's basic, but it's a word, it's Excel, it's Panimation. It just wasn't working for them. The, the field office, uh, officers had no access to anything when they were out in the field. Uh, it was complicated. It was clunk, it was clunky and they said, they said, look, we, we can't do our jobs. We wanted, we want to move forward and do something differently. That was loud and clear in the ear, in the EIP, their, your early intervention plan. That, this is actually a recommendation of EIP, uh, is to update the Code Office software. In Code Office, it's not just code, it's zoning, it's land development and all licensing permits. So that, that's really what sparked our interest in doing something more. In addition to that, all of the work that we've been doing with the minor GIS system that we have and the work that you saw. So that one map you saw of all the parcels with the colors, that's GIS. GIS is a powerful tool that most cities of our size are using to plan, to, um, to, to plan, to do capital improvement planning, to understanding where their infrastructure is, where their services are. It's really quite an amazing tool, um, that is not new. It's been around for decades. So this, what we're asking is twofold. Uh, we have a $200,000 grant, uh, from our EIP or it's now called STAMP, S-T-M-P. Is the program from D, so many acronyms, from D-E-C-D, uh, D-C-E-D, there we go. A-B-C and 123. But that, that grant is, uh, is hell, is $200,000 to start this work and it's for the software. We want to also now bring on the, uh, ARC GIS into a lot, most of our departments. This will be a big, big lift.
Could you build on to what the fire department already has done? They've got a GIS system that's fantastic, you know, wherever fire hydrant is and how close the hydrant is to certain buildings, things like that. Right in their trucks. I sat there and looked at it. I just.
So I would assume is that, I don't know what that's based on. This is not reinventing the, the wheel. This is actually giving us access to the Esri ARC GIS system for every department. So this, this not only, what's that?
Water lines, gas lines, all that kind of stuff.
Sewer, we've, we did a lot initially with, with storm sewer because we didn't have any of the storm sewer mapped. So we actually worked for a couple of years with, uh, Erie County because they had GIS to actually map out the storm, the storm water. They have been slowly converting that now. Uh, they've, the, the Public Works has put, has put people, um, in place to start mapping out our current infrastructure for sewer. We're, we're talking roads, lights, streetlights, all of this can be incorporated into a GI. So we had a GIS roadmap presentation by Esri. Here's everything that you can do. Not only does this come with the software, but it comes with data integration. So we have a lot of old data that now has to go into the new system and we really need that to happen. It also comes with three years of technical assistance. So we're going to have access to help all of our, all of the staff that will be using this to train them on how to use this in the field and to onboard that into their workflows. In addition, we have City Works, which will be the platform that we use with, um, our Code Office. So it's twofold. It's GIS to gives us, to give us sort of the background data integration and, and our data needs. And then City Works is the platform by which our code officers, and I'll show you just a little bit, it really doesn't do it justice. Here's some examples. So what you see on the left-hand side is, this is an example of a citizen, uh, problem report dashboard. So citizens, so this is, we, we could see Maz Sal's smiling face behind this. But this is an ability to, not only could Maz see this, but city council can see this. You can see who's call, who's making the phone calls. You would, people would be able to log into their computers, uh, or to their smartphones. They'd be able to identify an issue. You would see where those logs are, what's the, how are they being addressed? How quickly are they being addressed? Where they are actually geo-located in our city? So that's an example of the powerful tool that this, that this presents. Not only is it something that our staff will be able to use, but it's something that city council and the administration will be able to use to make decisions. It's like, where are things happening? What's going on? And we'll be able to present that to you. People can understand graphs and maps a lot easier than these reports. And then, um, City Works again is that platform. Our, our code officers will be able to have a mobile device in the field. They'll be able to know if this, if this property has a permit. If it has citations that's, has already been issued. If there is, they could potentially plug into, um, public safety and know if there's been action, uh, occurring on this, on this property. So there's, the, the, the concept is really endless and what we're asking is additional funding to onboard it. This covers our costs for the initial, um, onboarding of it, um, and technical assistance over the next three years. The biggest cost to actually do something like this is the upfront cost and this is what this funding will do, is give us up to speed. I don't know if, um, Andy or, or AJ.
Jumping up and down everything.
He was somewhere, well, will you guys just? No, he's not. If, uh, if Andy or AJ wanted to speak to this and then I'll, I'll ask Aaron Browse or Erin Carey for that matter. She's been our GIS expert, um, for a long time. So, uh, she can also help. Anyone want to speak to, uh, this, some of the challenges and, and what you see the, the opportunities are? He's pointing at you, AJ. Oh, come up to the table. Turn that.
Answer the question about the fire department. They actually use the water authorities' system.
Really?
And with this new GIS, that's what we're looking at. And it consisted with, it consisted with the water authorities' GIS. We actually pulled some of their information now. Catherine said, we've been working on, on all this stuff for a year or two. I've been working on this for 20 years. When we got Panimation and Sun Guard, it was terrible, absolutely terrible. It still is. Um, if it crashes, we're dead in the water. I'm back to paper and paper. I cannot tell you how important it is for this new software for our office. All of you get complaints. You get a complaint, you'd be able to put it in your tablet, computer. Look at that address and know instantly what is going on with that property. Any building permits, any complaints, property maintenance, all the above would be at your fingertips. That's what this is going to do to our office. David has done building permits and so forth, um, to get any email to know that it's out of zoning and into engineering. That's huge for him. For people to get a fence permit online, not even have to come down to city hall. That's huge for them and pay for it online. That's what this does for us. It puts my inspector's office out on the streets. It, it, it's unbelievable that I'm sitting here and we're talking about this, that we're getting there this close.
And the, the ability to, when you're thinking about ARP and the impact of COVID, the ability to, for residents to be able to, to work, uh, online, to get their, uh, their questions answered, to be able to pull permits. I mean, we were all shut down for, for so long, but for developers to pull permits virtually, to pay for them, to know where they're at in the process. Where, who's approved what? Where's the hangup? It really builds an efficiency and allow, allows people to, to be able to not have to come into city hall to get all of the work done. And the efficiencies within the Code Office we'll see will be amazing. It's not going to be easy. We believe it'll take about 18 months to onboard everything and to get the training and everything established. The, the integration from hard copy to this is going to be big, but the transformation of how, the, I'm saying the transformation of how the city provides services is going to be pretty impressive. Kathy, does it bump anyone out of the job? Wow, that's a question. Andrea, I would hope not. I hope everyone can, can, it changes the way that they'll do, that they'll work.
It, it will. Uh, it will help. It will help streamline everything, um, especially for the inspectors. You could be looking at one permit tech that just does permits doing a lot more.
Yeah.
And, and that's where the 18 months will come in. I have four girls in the office, permit tech, two permit techs and, um, in a rental. This will actually pull a rental in too. Everything will be under one half. And that's huge, huge for us. So I really don't see, they might have any job titles. But the licensing, um, which hopefully we're going to address next year and, and strengthen that up a little bit. But a lot of things that we've been working towards this new software. This is huge. It really is.
How is this going to? There was something on the previous screen about what's going to be presented to the public. And we know that, um, that the website desperately, I think it desperately needs upgrading. It's better than when you first came on board, but it doesn't compare to a lot of what I see at other cities where it's just so easy to use. But also those dashboards, it's my understanding that a lot of that, that should be public information too, not just for city council. You know, to be able to, to track things.
And it will be. The public will have access.
Okay.
I get a lot of, I get phone calls every day, all day long about property maintenance issues. Where people would be able to go on and look to see, they won't be able to see the exact violation, but they'll be able to know that, yes, we're there, um, there is violations. Until a case is closed, it then can become public record. But we can say, yes, we're there and we were there on this day at this time.
I, I just know that it's, it's an expensive proposition though to actually operate the website too. So is this included in here?
That we do have funding for, for a, a website update. That's at $75,000, which is part of this, this request. This request also covers the cost of social pinpoint, which you've already, um, approved. I was going to ask, um, I think Aaron Browse is still on the call, uh, from Esri. And I was going to ask Aaron, if you could make a, some comments about, you know, the, the ability for this to be sort of a public facing, yeah, public facing, uh, the abilities that, 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 that this will make available to a public accessing through our website. I'm putting you on the spot, Aaron. Thanks for being on the call.
Yeah, absolutely. Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks for allowing me to talk on behalf of you all here today. Yeah, so you know, when it comes to public engagement, that's one, that's one aspect that we do really well with the technology. And, and many major cities, small municipalities, counties, states, they use our technology, um, for the public engagement aspect of things. We have something that's included called ArcGIS Hub, which would come with this license thing and you guys would be able to enable that to all of the different solutions that you were looking to make for the, available to the public, including the citizen, um, service requester and problem reporter, all the way to some of our other solutions around capital projects. Really, it's to enable you to be more transparent with the public, but also improve your internal, um, operational efficiencies.
Thank you. Any other questions for our, our experts, uh, on the, on the call? I mean, he can really kind of, I don't know, we spent a couple of hours on, on learning about, more about Esri and, and what they can provide. And if not, I'll just, I think A.J. stepped up to the mic, uh, would like to maybe say a few words about the impact that, uh, GIS could have with, uh, with everything that Public Works does. Thanks, A.J.
Just to echo what everyone said so far and to piggyback on what Andy had said, uh, holistically, our cross-departmental efficiencies and synergies on project and project management for a single source of reference, it will be just a, a great improvement in the process that we currently have and our functionalities. For Public Works alone, I could run through, uh, we brainstormed multiple different avenues and ways that GIS could really improve our processes. From anywhere from storm sewers to sanitary sewers to best management practices, to locating inlets, manual digitizing the locations of the lines, tracking best management practices that we implement, that other people implement, that other organizations implement, locations, digitizing the record, record of when we were there last, when, when there was a main issue, when there was a fallout issue. And to get off the sewer track, but to think of just other everyday occurrences that you see. PA1 call efficiencies that would occur there with having utility lines marked on a one central location. Benchmarking progression of projects, surveying for public works projects. Having a street tree inventory, AR, ADA curb ramp inventory, traffic signal and preemption system inventory for, uh, for roadways. City on lighting facilities, street sign inventory, pavement markings, cool flashers, permanent A street sidewalk closures right away. Asset management, asset lifecycle. We could go on and on. But ultimately, GIS and improvement in the processes and digitization, it just. it just ultimately is going to enhance our ability, the city's ability to maintain and improve our infrastructure, which is essential and which a lot of these bills that have been introduced to pass our money, infrastructure money, that's what the intent and the goal is. That just to help us do that out to the finish and keep improving.
What's the learning curve on this? Is it a lot to? Like, will the employees have to take a webinar or something on it?
A few. So there is, it does come along with with training. And I was going to ask, Aaron, can you speak to that of how, you know, most municipalities bring this on? And I I it's it's through the enterprise agreement that we'll have that technical assistance for multiple years to as we learn how to use the system. Aaron, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, you know, I I think the good part about the technology is that it is very user friendly from a front ender, front end viewpoint. And so when you're looking to come on, let's say, from what the way you guys are trying to bring this technology on, it's actually good that you guys are going to be able to have access where you're enabling everyone, right? So where it becomes difficult is if it falls on one person's shoulder, right? That's where this can collapse. But the way that Erie is approaching this is really following best practices and enabling everyone. So that it's not that you're, yes, there's going to be, you have to learn maybe some of the functionality to it, but it's more about if you know how to do your current job and your workflow, it's really about translating that over to the system. So ultimately, you're doing less work in that regard and able to focus on the most important matters at hand. So when it comes to it, you actually will have access to training resources. You actually have a training coordinator that will help coordinate the staff so that they're able to take on what they can handle based on the capacity, their capacity load. And of course, you know, everything when it comes to training is relevant to timing. So really, we don't, we want to train people when they're about to use it. You don't want to just train people to train people. It's about specific timing. So from that perspective, it is done through our advantage program and the enterprise agreement that really allows the city to take full advantage of every aspect of the technology as we talked about. And again, you know, even from a community standpoint, you know, there's a community learning curve to anything as well. So our technology does really well with that too. And there's lots of different ways that we have to enable the community to be able to easily adopt the technology.
And I I apologize. I was I was co-mingling the the terminology. The enterprise system is the software software system and the advantage program is the technical assistance. So I just want to clarify that. I misspoke. Of course, Aaron Browse did not. So to clarify that. And you'll learn more about that. It's a good, it's a very good question, but you know, GIS is something that has to be learned by the people who are actually inputting the data, but enable, in order for people to access what is being inputted, it's going to be much easier. So we're all not going to have to be experts in GIS. And I can assure you, I know how to run through a story map that Erin Carey has put together, but I don't put the story map together. Erin Carey does. And she's probably the model of how GIS can be successful. When she started with the city, where as a Vista, she didn't know how to use GIS at all. We didn't even have access to GIS. We used we used a free software system, which was challenging at best. She's self-taught using YouTube and other online webinars and has been able to get a subscription now to ArcGIS and is right now, she's she's our, she's our expert in in GIS and works very closely with Erin. So I will give her a shout out, but I won't make her come up here and talk unless you guys have a question for her. Any any other questions? I knew this one was going to be a little more complicated. I tried to give you as much information as possible to kind of take home and digest. This is a very exciting opportunity. And and again, everything that we've talked about tonight, this this is a, this is multi-years in the making. So you'll see it as we progress with every project. But we wanted to talk to you early about the the request and what's what's happening. So I appreciate everyone's time. And I will turn it over to any more questions and I will turn it back over to Ms. Shaw or or President Brzezinski, whoever, I'm not sure who's running the meeting. I don't know. I think Kathy stopped. I feel like I was running. So thank you very much for your time. Oh, I think Heather wants to, you want to say something, Heather? Yeah. Is it green?
Green light. It is. Okay, very good. Thanks. I'm Heather Paster with the SSJ Neighborhood Network. And I'm just one of many of the grassroots organizations that are working here in the neighborhoods. And I think the community has really come to rely on our neighborhood groups to do a lot of this work. And we do, we, I think we work with the blighted properties. I'm looking at these items on on the agenda. Working in the blighted properties of public art, activation of vacant spaces, and we hit, all of us quickly, the limit of our capacity to be able to work on these things, both because of finances or just there's not enough hours in the day. And so we hit that point quickly. And we also, when we're talking about some of the public parks, public right of ways, we hit the limit of our authority to be able to address those things too, even if we wanted to be able to do that, we can't. So I think that what the all of these programs working together really will help us all individually, the neighborhood groups, but as a city evolve in how we respond to, in a much more mature way to all of these issues that we're all sort of trying to do in it. The relationships are so important that we do at the grassroots level. But if we can also layer that with data and have it be data-driven, I think that it's really important. I I see all of these five items so interwoven and so layered together in a way that I think is really important, and they speak to each other. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that out, that I feel like this is only going to help all of us to do our jobs too and serve more people. But thanks. Kathy, I think you are to be commended. No question, the department for the for the work that you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you for that unsolicited.
Hi all. Jeremy Blazer, Big Twenty Side Passports. I just wanted to echo everything that my counterparts had said. We are in full support of everything on this page. What I'm most impressed about really is the leveraging of the resources. And so a group like Groundworks, I mean, I've been on every single Groundworks meeting we've had over the past two years, as Kathy had said, many of it on Zoom, and to see that we're following a national model, bringing it and adding our own flavor to it. So we can benefit from all the good work they've done in other cities, everything from those ideas of developing job skills within our youth to then improving our community and getting more buy-in from youth to improve our community. So it's some of the smaller dollar items actually on here that I think are going to be the most impactful. This last one about digital transformation, I mean, I really think this technology that we're talking about, Hattie, I mean, Best is a small, two-person nonprofit organization, and we already have our GIS, actually Erin Carey trained my staff in using it. And so we're asking you to come into the 21st century and use softwares that other cities are benefiting from. So I really think that this is going to greatly impact the large dollars that are needed for the public space improvements in the East Bayfront Greenway, as well as Swinney, obviously will have a huge impact on our community. But some of these smaller dollars are actually being used to leverage some of the larger dollars. So I really commend Kathy and the whole team of putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're, the the group that has spoken tonight, the neighborhood groups, they've been so giving of their time. They've sat through many, many meetings. I don't think there's one that they reject if they see it on coming across their calendar. So I appreciate the time and effort. And can't echo enough how important it is that they have informed the recommendations that are before you. This isn't something that I sat at my desk and said, okay, what do I want to, what do I want to come to you? Or anyone who knows me is, I, if if this isn't something that's supported by the residents and this community as a whole, I'm not going to bring it forward to you because I think that's important for for buy-in and for impact. So I appreciate the the comments tonight, but also equally appreciate the time and dedication of our, of the neighborhood groups that come to the table day in and day out and really help us, really help move the the city very forward.
We're far enough along with the allocation as far as funding for each of the parks, like second walls. What kind of money we put into it?
So the the $5 million request is, and we'll use participatory budgeting to figure out which parks get the funding and what that exactly will go into. We'll work closer with Public Works because they have a good sense of what the needs are as well. So we'll, there'll be more to talk about how the participatory budgeting and you'll help us, sorry, you'll help us frame how that that process works as we move forward. Thank you. It's a very long, a long part. I promised Paulie wouldn't have to sit here and listen to me talk for two hours, but I'm afraid that wasn't. Thank you. So thank you for your time and everyone else's time tonight. And I look forward to have, if you have any questions, of course, you know how to get ahold of me, email, call, and then we'll see you again next week, hopefully.
Thank you, Kathy. I know your dedication and commitment is second to none. I know Liz and I had worked on the ground level of your Summer of Hope campaign and can't say enough about all the good works that you and your group have done. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anyone else have any more questions? If not, we'll go into into the budget.
I had requested, because logistics, we get here on time, Mr. Mararski did a lot of work on trying to find some money in the budget for those two wonderful fees that we still have in there for garbage and sewer. He asked me to just bring it along. That's why I asked for 15 minutes earlier, which none of us got here for, I'm sorry. But he's asking, is there water lease money? How much is 11, $11 million in that balance?
11 and a half. There's 11 and a half billion dollars right now. We've planned on using that money over the next four or three years. We use some of it in 2021, 22, 23, 24 to stave off any real estate tax increases or any increases in in any type of fees. So any money we would take away from that, 11 and a half billion dollars, the bank account right now, would bring about a tax increase earlier.
Are we able to go and buy a bag for garbage instead of the way we do the system now?
You know, Kathy, I I know somebody brought that up at the last meeting. And and we had, if you look in the budget handout book, one of the people from my office actually called the 10 largest municipalities around Erie County. And I think there's only one that is using that type of system right now. And without me looking at the book, I don't know exactly who it is.
Happy Green Township.
You could read that one. Somebody, somebody does use that type of system, but most of the others have gotten away from that. It used to be either Lawrence Park or Westerville sold bags, but I had Saraji from my office call every one of those cities and ask them exactly what they do. And that that's not in play anymore.
I do think Mill Creek still has it because my friend takes advantage of it in Mill Creek now. Maybe it changes because, you know, they might change contractors.
Yeah, they outsourced to, it was Waste Management, wasn't it?
I believe they have a senior program or something like that.
So I don't know.
Get back to Jim here.
So there is money, but
Take 500,000 out of that.
If we take money out of that, out of that account, you know, the five-year plan that we have set in place, it knocks some of that last year money out of there. So.
How much money do we have left over in the, I'm just reading his notes here. How much money is left over in the ARP? It's not accounted for.
76 million dollars.
Yeah, right now.
76 million dollars has been.
Well, you guys have only, as a group, you've only, and we talked about this one, because Jackie and Lisa are both in my, you know, they're in my office. We've only appropriated 52 million or so as of, as of this moment. So is, Kathy just shows you a document today, and I don't want to speak for you, but 76 million of it is basically spoken for.
Which is the entire lot.
Yes.
I'm just getting up.
No, no, no.
Reading what you mean up there.
That that's where we're at. No, no, I understand. And I understand. And I understand, Jim, Jim, and he and I have talked about this, and we've all talked about it pretty much. I mean, the idea is to not have a refuse increase, to not have a sewer increase. And we all know, you know, pretty much everybody knows where I live. I'm going to pay taxes. I'm going to pay refuse fees. I'm going to pay sewer fees. I don't want to do that. But if we don't do these increases and we don't start on the path of the small increases year after year after year, we're going to be right back where we were. We're three, four years down the road. We're going to have a 17, 18, 19, 20, 21% increase because we used up all the money in the bank and then we have all these fees. So in in the world of refuse, Michael, in the world of refuse, we all know that every two or three years, every three years, the refuse contractor goes out for tipping fees. And that thing's gone up and up and up every time we've bid that out. Wages go up, the price of gasoline.
What about the water reserve? We've already heard this.
We have water. Okay, yeah, you have. Sorry.
I'm looking for money for garbage.
There's money in the water reserve fund. There's 14 million in the water reserve fund. Let me say it. Let's take it all out. Give me six votes to do it.
Because you need a super majority.
Majority. So, so he asked me about that. You need a super majority to take any of the money out of that account. And remember, that's the account, the 4% of that bank account is used to fund our capital spending. Would, you know, the anemic capital spending budget that I get every year, 500, 600,000 dollars. If we take that money out of that account, you know, we're just cutting into our ability to buy police cars, to buy, you know, backup fire vehicles, to buy some public works vehicles. When when the blowers in the basement just broke the other day, and I don't know if anybody knows that, but two of the heaters downstairs broke. We need some money to get, I don't know how much they're going to cost yet, but we need money to pay for that stuff. So that that capital budget comes about from the water reserve. And if the water reserve fund is depleted, there's going to be no money for capital.
About depleted. We're talking about with two garbage and sewer, we're talking what, 1.7?
Yeah, 1.7 million times 4%. You know, you're talking about a lot of money there. Yes.
I'm talking about throwing a bone out to the people. That's all.
How are you going to get six votes for us, though? You need six votes to be able to do that.
To take any money out, I'm sorry, to take any money out of the water reserve.
Yeah. So my my question is, is while, like we said, we've got 76 million dollars here, you know, I don't think we've done our due diligence about all the things that can be reimbursed to our city to include the uptick in wages like that are experienced in public works. What they call it, a bonus pay or whatever for essential workers or is, is in the guidelines. And so those are things that we chose not to do. We could take money out of the 76 million dollars and however they structure it there, I don't know how they did it, and refund that money back to our fund balance. And so the fact that we're neglecting ourselves isn't a reason to put it on the taxpayer. The, we have 76 million dollars. I don't know who gets the haircut, but we have 76 million dollars. And there's plenty of things that can be reimbursed if we do our due diligence to reimburse them instead of spend the money.
Is that a question or? No, no, no. Okay.
Yeah, indirect with public works. So I don't know how that was added to the budget because we had to, you know, since we add 33% to, you know, the personnel, for each person.
No, there was nothing added.
They said they hired people.
They did. They had, they hired people at $15 an hour, which we're going to pay going forward because we couldn't get anybody at $10 an hour.
Right.
Do you want to split hairs there and say it was because of ARP funding? It's really not. I mean, we had to hire, I mean, you go up the street to McDonald's and they're they're paying $15 an hour. I walked into Dick's Sporting. I walked into Dick's Sportingwood the other day. They got a sign, I think they're paying 17. So, so yet you're right, we did have to raise the rate, but that's not because of ARP. It, it's more about the new world order we're living in and what happened when COVID started, so.
And Paul, if I.
So, you know, some of this, well, ARP, you could say. Preceded the lack of work shortage and that language was put in there and so on.
Yes, that's, your, your statement is correct. We did raise the rates that were paying the part-time workers. From 10 to 15 dollars an hour. That's correct.
But, but the prudent financial thing to do is to follow. What we, the state paid for.
Well, Liz.
Taxpayers paid for this study.
Raising, raising.
Said we need to do this on a regular basis.
Raising rates incrementally.
That study came before the pandemic.
Yeah, but that was.
But it doesn't matter because the, the costs are still going to go up.
Money's not there.
Costs are going to go up.
Okay, we'll build a sidewalk or put grass in a quinte parking lot. Wouldn't we just help the people out there that have been holding this city up? That's all I'm saying.
Because they're going to end up, whatever those different alternatives were that Jim Wernarski gave. Somebody's going to end up paying sooner or later.
Right there, pass them around.
Taking out the 12, money from the, the, the water reserve fund. First of all, you need six votes for it, and I don't see that there's six votes for that. What was the other one?
Jim said a part of it, he didn't say all of it.
Taking the water lease money, so then now we, we put the property tax increase earlier. He's not going to be here to have to vote on a property tax increase earlier. And apparently he's not going to have to vote on one in county council since the new county executive. Claims he is going to go for four years without raising any taxes. Good luck.
Sure. Increase fees, then you'll have new taxes, like we are doing.
Said no taxes or fees and you don't pay that many county fees anyhow, so.
So.
In Jim's memorandum.
Rover stamped this, that we're saying for.
It says. Could we. Choose one or the other to increase? Could we?
It still puts us back in the same position though, one or the other, and then we're still going to have to do it later on. I do think that in 2022, that, you know, Kathy, you asked a question, would it lose jobs by going to the, you know, the technology? Maybe it doesn't lose a job, but maybe eventually it leads to more efficiencies. Where you don't have to replace somebody. Nobody wants to say that, but it could, it could make the city more efficient. And we could save money that way in the future budgets. In here, I mean, there's actually discussion about. Broader programs and bolder programs to save money with the, the sewer waterworks, or I'm sorry. Waste water treatment plant. We could explore those ideas, but the only way we're going to be able to do it is if we. Put our nose to the grindstone, go back and reread this, look at every recommendation that's in here. What haven't we been able to do? They've done a lot with the capacity that, that the administration has. Who wouldn't want to commit to saving money and making it more efficient in every way possible? But to do it right now on, with today, December 7th, I think is kind of late considering we got this in. February of 2020.
And can I speak to that? I mean, we've all been here, like the mayors, I see the mayor on Zoom. And I'm going to give the mayor and Curtis Jones kudos. And Mel, you were around, David, I don't think you were yet, but back in 2007, eight, nine. We spoke back then about small 3, 4% incremental increases. In the sewer and refuse rates so that we wouldn't get at a point every four years where we're raising those things. 20% and everybody always agreed. And I bring a budget down and it would never, for some reason, we could never get the four to go with this, but. Just to back up what Liz is saying, I mean, if, to, to take half a million dollars, and again, you know. $13 per person, you know, I don't want to discount $13 per person per year for this fee or that fee. But, but in, in doing something like that, we get ourselves off plan. And then we, we, we're going to have to make it up somewhere in the future.
So what was the total again, per person, per household? It comes up to like 70?
Yeah, with everything. Sewer, stormwater fee, yeah. So we're looking at 19 for the garbage and, and again, the sewer. Is all dependent on what your average usage is. I always base that average on if you use 17 CCF. Per, per quarter. It's, it's a hard thing to say because my water bill for my daughter and I is $100 a month. So I guess I'm not average. Again, another 13, 14, 15, $10 depending on your usage. Because I don't want, you know, I don't want to be pinned down to, if you're average, it's going to be 14, 15 dollars. But if you're not average, it could be a lot higher and it could be a lot lower. Depends on how often you use your dishwasher and how often you use your, your washing machine. And Ed, to speak to that, you know, the, the senior citizen that is on fixed income. That may only wash, use their washing machine once a week or their, or their dishwasher once a week. They're going to be a lot less than the average. Now they're going to pay that fee for garbage. And maybe someone in the future, you know, if, if I can find Mill Creek's the one I, I. That we could go to selling bags or whatever, but the, the, the price of bags, again. We have an operation that costs X amount of dollars. So if we know that we pick up. I, I don't even want to.
Do we have to raise the sewer rate because we take a million out of it every year for the budget? Explain that to me.
Well, we do take a transfer from the sewer and the refuse funds.
Million dollars.
Yes, that's correct.
So. Why don't we not take the million dollars?
If we didn't take those back to, we would have to make that million dollars up in the general fund as a revenue.
Art money to make it up, you know, that Paul.
Well, we're hoping to use the ARP money for other. Purposes that benefit the general fund, such as capital. We need fire trucks, we need police cars, we need public works vehicles. There's a multitude of things with that ARP revenue, you're talking about the revenue replacement. That we can use that money for other than. Being a, being a fund balance, being a fund balance stock gap. Because it's only for one year and then we're going to be right back in the same position next year. And we're going to need to find the, that money plus the makeup.
To me, there seemed like there were a few retirements of people who were getting a nice salary. And then there are people coming in, wouldn't be paid that, that top salary.
We budget that accordingly. And when you look at your people pages in the budget. We budget each person at where they're at and we take into account with the police and the fire. That remember in the book, there's like eight to 10 each year that are going to retire. We take that stuff into account when we, when we do the people pages.
We also, yes, I'm sorry for interrupting. You're right though. I forgot about that. This building. Has issues, like you just said, the blowers downstairs. That need to be replaced. And then there's the, the police officer's floor is bad.
Yes.
Very bad.
Yeah, Dan, Dan and, Dan Spazarni and Dan Black gave me a couple quotes the other day that we're looking, I'm trying to figure out. Where to get some money to deal with some of that stuff over there, yes. Yeah, and we do pay for a lot of that out of capital each year, but we also pay for a lot of the building fix-ups. Out of what the, the department called public building maintenance and in their repair and maintenance, both services and supplies.
And we never. Really redid the treasurer's office.
Well.
That much. Remember how Sue, Sue DeVekio had.
Yeah, she.
Really wanted to upgrade.
It would have been, it would have looked beautiful, but at that point in time, if. It was 75, $100,000 and we just didn't have the money at that point in time to, to do all that. It was, I remember she had the architect do the work and there's a lot of money, but it would have made the, it would have made. The first person everybody sees here, it would have made everything look nice.
We could have done this room with different things too.
Yes. I think Lori asked for, you as a group had asked Lori to ask me to find some money for painting, correct?
Carpeting.
Was it carpeting? Okay, so I knew, I knew it was something. I knew it was something that I have to find and.
But there's no money in the budget, so. You already told me, there's nothing there, so we better not do any of that stuff. Better not replace those, whatever hell went down there in the basement, where were they, boilers?
Yeah, heaters.
Heaters, yeah. Don't replace them, they're not money. Do it. Or we're going to find money.
Would the county be able to give us some money since they're using our. Facility?
Good point.
The amount, I, I, we could ask, yes.
Don't forget though, we're getting a benefit from having the courthouse here. That enabled us to have the security system.
Yeah.
So.
We've done pretty much everything that needs to be done.
So my question would be. Is there, I understand why we need to raise rates and everything, but the question is. If we could go back and look at eligible reimbursements, you know. One more time before all the money's spent, I think that that's a valuable thing that, you know, that we can do as a city. Because even if we do. You know, raise the rates this year. You know, we should be taking full advantage of the extra money that is floating to our coffers. Now we'll be done.
I think one of the things that I just found out is, I mean, Erie did not get hit as hard as some other cities in Pennsylvania. With, with the. Not with COVID, I mean, we're really being hit hard by COVID, but financially, I guess Redding really took it on, on the chin. And. But some of the things that helped, Paul, remember you had, you've told us over and over again that the earned income tax, we. We did okay. I mean, and even, and people paid their property taxes too.
Yes, they did.
Didn't have those kind of revenue deficits that some other places had, is my understanding. I mean, so it's kind of good and bad. I mean, we, we did better than other cities, so I don't think we can. I don't think we have as much room for revenue replacement maybe in some other.
Now, the collections, as you said, the collections of the earned income tax and the LST bore out or bear out even still. What, what you're saying that the LST tax was down and it, it was in line with what the unemployment rates that the. The federal government put out for Pennsylvania, United States and Northwestern PA. But for some reason, the income tax collections, the earned income tax collections did not go down proportionally. In any way, shape or form, so. People were, people were working during the pandemic.
You thought maybe.
Yes, the higher income people were working, the lower income people were not working. But now we're back to where, we're back to where we were a couple of years ago. We're within 1, 1 and 1/2% on all those numbers as, as I've been tracking them. You know, let this month, three months ago, six months ago, 12 months ago, so.
So that leaves us to. The point where. The budget needs to be passed by December 31st.
Correct. And your last meeting's next Wednesday.
Actually, I pulled out that book on Erie mayors and I started reading the last chapter about Lou Tulio and everything. And I think I told you that one time I covered a meeting, a city council meeting when I was in college where they approved the budget on New Year's Eve. Right before midnight, but there actually was a time, and I don't know, Ed, if you remember this, where city council for some reason. Waited until they came in on January 1st and approved the budget. I was shocked, shocked, I tell you.
They, um. Well, the year before I got here, 2005. Only because of the problems there were with what went on and the budgeting that was done, they, they were here. The last week in December voting yes or no, but, but, but. The issue there was. You know, there were, we all remember, there were some issues with some revenues that may or may not have really been like the. If, 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 if the will of council and, you know. The mayor's on, he spoke eloquently about this last week.
If you use our money for that, you are not. Doing anything to hurt that, that fund.
Well, we're.
Because you're, you're taking the 1.3 million that we need.
We're hurting the usual capital, the ability.
No, we're taking that much money out of ARP funding that we never get anyway.
We still didn't, we still didn't have to find money to buy fire trucks, police cars, public works vehicles. Because we're out of bond money now. We're, the, the end of our bond money comes the, comes springtime. Because we had to, we took that 19 bond out, we have to spend the money in four years. We have a couple $300,000 or actually have a million left. But we're going to spend 180,000 of it on the police body camera contract. So we only have a couple $300,000 left in that bond money. So there's nothing, there's, there's no safety valve, there's no.
How many policemen do you have targeted for on the budget? 196?
Yes, correct.
And when do you think you'll get 196?
Well, as Dan spoke to you about that, he's going to have his 175. Then he's looking at bringing nine or 10 on in May or so. And then he's planning on bringing another 10 or so on in the fall. And that.
That's a lot of months' money that's.
We budgeted, no, we budgeted the ARP reimbursement accordingly. We budgeted so that we, we didn't take. All 3 million dollars the first year.
Or quarter of a policeman.
Yes, correct.
Quarter of a policeman.
Yeah.
So we ask the city of Erie. To. Help us all out. To continue with wonderful services. And. Come up with. $70 for this coming year.
If you approve the stormwater fee also.
That's good.
So we also need to remember, in, in, I know we keep talking about the ARP money. And I'm going to, you know, take ARP totally away from the general fund. The ARP money is the mayor, and mayor, I don't want to speak for you, but the mayor has said he wants to use that money for transformational. Things, I mean, things that are going to help the city, things that are going to make this a better, a better livable city. If, if we take money from that and use it for regular operating expenses, we're going, again, we're going to have to make that up. 12 months from now, 24 months from now, 36 months from now. And, and did we then take a million dollars that could have been used for something transformational? And turn it into.
Helping the people who built this town?
Helping the people who are going to live here and who will be helped by all the good things that the ARP money is going to do for them. Mayor, anything?
I guess I would just add that I really believe that, that. The $31 or $32 a year we're asking people to pay for the two fees in the budget. That, that's going to save them money over the long term. If you take that money from another source this year, that's not repetitive, it's going to be much more expensive. And in fact, we did a, a study on the stormwater fee that, that you guys rejected. And that's going to increase costs to residents because of delaying it like we did significantly, so. And that's gonna increase costs to residents because of delaying it like we did significantly, so. We presented to you what we believe is the best budget, what's, what's best for citizens in terms of their expenses over the coming years. And I really believe that that is true. I understand when you say you're trying to save people money, but you can't just look at one year, you have to look at at least five years. That's why we give you a five-year budget every year. And if you don't do the two increases we asked for, you're gonna be costing people more money over the next five years.
I know people are working from home, so they're saving money. Like gas money is outrageous, I mean, gas.
But if you're not driving as much.
If you're working from home, then you're saving that money or you're spending it in other ways. So it looks like we're going to recess for this evening. Oh, Chris, what are you going to talk about?
Oh, I guess then.
What?
Where are we at?
I think some people are for the budget. Mr. Witherspoon, you've been very quiet this evening.
Everybody had a very good point. And I understand. Being a senior citizen on fixed income. I understand that. But personally, I would rather. Find the thirty-two dollars. Than get hit with property tax, the cost of living going up in four or five years. I'll save money.
Thank you, Dave.
I kind of same thought about, but also as a, it's, it's a long-term thing and. You know, I can, I kind of feel like when we try to cut, you know, we are kicking, kicking down the road, but as I mentioned last time, that, you know. We need to look at long-term solutions, you know, our, our problem in Erie is that we need more taxpayers, we need more people in sitting more companies. How do we get there? Um, it's, it's not gonna happen overnight that we're gonna all of a sudden, you know, have these balanced budgets, not balanced budget, but we, we're gonna have excess money. So I guess what I'm just trying to say is that, um, you know, I, I, I don't think, um. You know, trying to cut, cut the budget this year makes sense, but I, I do agree with them. Uh, that it's, you know, it'll affect it later if we kick it down the road further.
Mr. Keith?
I don't disagree with, um, with your analogy, but, um. Economics have changed, I mean, when water says they've grown up five percent every year. We say we're gonna go up three percent every year, you know, there was a time when, you know. People got three to five percent raises every year. We have a local company trying to get a nickel on strike. You know, this, this is the reality of our new world, it's people's income is not going up as fast as our increases. And so that's something that we do need to be mindful of because as. Things like. Housing prices start to climb in Erie, people start to have options. Uh, that didn't necessarily have options before, and so we need to be cognizant of that we want to. Recoup, recoup and capture and keep every person in the city that we can.
Mr. President?
Yes, I am.
We know what you want. Liz, I think we know what you want. I think you know what I want.
I don't know.
I don't know, I just want people to, uh. Be happy for living in Erie because we are less inexpensive expense-wise as other cities.
Kathy, if I could really believe that there was no money in that ARP funding that we just got from God. Then I would not be trying to help the people. It's not just the, the people on a fixed income that I've been barking about. Uh, you think landlords are gonna pay those increases themselves? They're gonna put that money right back on the shoulders of the poorest people who are maybe looking to buy their first house. And they're gonna end up with thirty dollars more in their, uh. Their payment, their rent.
Annually though, you aren't talking about monthly or you're talking about annually.
Right.
Right, and so I don't know if anyone else has seen the studies on, you know, soaring rent prices, especially in small and medium-sized cities. That's something that, you know, you could do your own, own analysis on, on later, but it's not getting easier. Uh, and so, uh. I just want everyone to be cognizant of that it's not getting easier, expenses are rising faster than people's income. And, uh, we need to take note of that.
That being said, Mr. Groner? The finance part is done, right, Kev?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Groner, if I do, um, say something about the Quinte, I know there's a lot of cost involved and. A lot of soil remediation, but, um, people have given me ideas, um, through my four years of council. Of like we could have an arts, uh, village in there or a small house. Uh, setting in there or, um, homeless, uh. Housing in there and different things like that too, just wanted to put that in your head.
Okay, thank you, I know a lot of information flying around tonight, but. It's important, I wanted to at least take a few minutes and go over a project that we've been working on. With, uh, one of our larger employers on the west side of the city, Rare Pacific. Uh, you're probably familiar with them, it's been, uh, part of the Erie community for nearly fifty years. Um, and they're doing a sizable expansion on their West Twentieth Street, uh, location. Um, the mayor and I, mayor and I met with Peter Rarick, who is from California, to meet with us, go over his plans. Uh, along with Public Works. To discuss, uh. Their proposed expansion, they're looking to invest five point six million in their facility. Uh, in constructing a new sixty thousand square foot addition to their existing footprint. They need to make this investment because, uh, and you'll see later on in here, I'm not gonna go over everything in the packet, but. Right now they have, uh. Their main building on the north side of Twentieth Street, and then they have thirty thousand square foot on the south side of Twentieth Street. Right now, they're literally driving forklifts back and forth across Twentieth Street, moving product all day. It is grossly inefficient and they need to make upgrades for this plant to remain viable. They stressed that they want to invest in Erie, they wanna be, they wanna remain. Part of our community, but they need to upgrade this facility. And part of that is, and you'll see in the detail, part of that is the purchase of roughly one and a half acres. Uh, just to the west, it was a Little League ball field a few years ago. That's where they're gonna be adding a sixty thousand square foot. Facility. For this to work, they're asking that we vacate Twentieth Street. If you're familiar with that stretch, they are the only, basically the only neighbor there, they are on both sides of Twentieth Street. And now with the acquisition of this, uh, land, uh, they'll be the only one on that stretch. And so they're asking that we, uh. Look at vacating that street, Public Works has already looked at this and said that they have no issues with that. Talked with Jake Walsh and, uh. Code Enforcement Office, if we indicate to me, I could come straight to you, um. Wasn't quite sure what the process is, but he said I could just speak.
I think Mr. Best has said something about a three hundred dollar fee and we could put a resolution in. We'd be ready to go, but I.
Yeah, all I know is Jake emailed me a couple days before I called you, said I could speak directly with you and and just. Put it on agenda, so apparently there's, you have the ability to just.
I have no problem with it, the rest of the board.
Just have a question, have a, uh, what about the traffic, any traffic study been done?
So the only traffic along there are basically their employees parking up and down the streets, they don't have enough parking. And then the semi trucks that come in and load and unload all day. And if you ever go over there, you'll see that, that there's just a log jam of semi trucks trying to back into their building on both sides. Uh, there, there is really no through traffic going through there that's not related to Rare Pacific. Uh, nobody lives there on that street. Uh, but it's very tight fit right now, the semis have a hard time maneuvering, um, in and out. Now, this is also a project I'm talking with DCD about at the state level because Rarick has. They have about fifty locations throughout the country, they've got five or six in Pennsylvania. This is gonna help strengthen their foothold in Pennsylvania as well, so the state has taken some interest in trying to support them also. But within Pennsylvania, Erie is their largest plant, they've got about a hundred and forty-one employees. Um, and an additional thirty temps, and they're looking to add people.
They want the safety?
They already bought it. Yeah, and so they want to build a sixty thousand square foot facility there. And connect the two buildings, now there would still be an easement, there would be an access there because if we ever had to get to the utilities on the ground. We'll have the ability to do that. So the, 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 the design, and you'll see it in there, the design is going to allow. For, uh. But at the end of the day, they, they really don't want to continue, uh, driving a forklift across the street, moving product each day back and forth. It's just not a, not a way.
Chris, is it a zoning change also, the zoning is, the baseball?
It's already zoned, uh, it's already ready for that, um, so it's just. You know, when, when you look at the information in here, you'll see that it, it really makes sense to accommodate what they're trying to do and, and let that become their campus. And let it grow, uh, and, and make that investment.
Looks like the win-win, bro.
I don't know if it was Mr. Or. Mr. Witherspoon.
Witherspooninski.
I don't disagree, we did, so one, so Twentieth Street is dead in there or?
Yeah, if you keep going west, that's where Smith Provisions is now located and that, that part of Twentieth Street was closed years ago, so there's no.
So it won't continue on here, so the next Twenty-first Street does continue, Twenty-first, yeah, twenty. So this is an open field and it's Smith Provisions.
Chris, could you, uh?
I think it was Mr. Witherspoon said, yeah, when we give people something, we should get something, I don't know what it is. But, uh, if we're gonna vacate the city street, uh.
We're gonna get sixteen new positions at least.
So, yeah, what, what, so what I was gonna say is what we're getting is a six million dollar investment that will, that will eventually. Be added to our tax base.
Chris, could I ask you to call, uh, Mr. Best in the morning and have him put the resolution together? It's okay with council, we can put it on the fifteenth docket.
Question, do the neighbors know about this?
There's only one or two neighbors there.
No, I mean, all the neighbors that live across the street and live on this side, do they know about the project?
On Twenty-first Street.
Are you talking about along Hayburger?
Yeah, Twenty-first Street.
That's all commercial along Hayburger.
No, on, on Twenty-first Street, all those residences.
South side of Twenty-first.
Hayburger is, I think, two residences on a corner and then down one, but Twenty-first Street has.
I'm gonna say all the houses that surround the baseball field, both their, their houses will be now looking, looking at a, a middle building.
So on, on the south side of Twenty-first, I don't know if they're aware of that.
Looks like they're planning.
But the zoning, the zoning here. For this parcel is not, I mean, it's, it's an industrial zone, so. They're not, they're not going against a. A different use that was there before.
Yeah. It wouldn't be bad if, uh. Some type of, of communication is made even with the neighbors down the street. You know, just to let them know what's coming. Because they, they'll come here and.
They, they must make sure there's some outreach done before we affirm this, uh, this plan to. Uh, let the neighbors know that this plan is in the works. Is that something that your office could do?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm satisfied with, you know, a letter. Let them know, and if they had any major concerns, then they can call in, if they don't call in, uh, we assume that they, uh, agree.
So I had, I had them, I just had them do a formal letter. So I wasn't sure exactly the process. So just to, just to get the process started, I had them write a letter, formally requesting this, so I don't know if.
It doesn't have one, do you have one now? This is an informal request by city council, um, I would suggest that they. That they draft a letter like this and, and say when it, it'll be on next week's council agenda, I'm assuming.
I wanted to just, first of all, update you on where we are, give you a copy of their.
Well, it's nice that it says. For phase two, five and a half million dollars will drive job retention and through development opportunities for our employees, so. It seems very positive, yeah.
They have, they have a very diverse workforce. Whatever the process, just up to show the steps, because I don't want to delay this, and he's out in California, it's project matters in Georgia. So I'm gonna do this for him, I don't expect them to be. Running this, I said, no, let me handle this, so.
I, I think a big question, this is, does it have to, do we have to have a public hearing on it? And I haven't asked for that. I have no problem doing that.
No, I get that, I get that, I mean technically though.
Get the ball moving.
You're not comfortable with that.
Well, you know, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I think it's a good thing for the city. And. We just need to notify those folks, we can start that process, check with Mr. Best. But start that process. He can get a letter out, or somebody can get a letter out to these folks, and I think it should be on the, uh, next objective. And, you know, they will come down, they get the letter in, they will come down and.
Chris, have they, have they come any pre-approval with the BIU or anything for the building, or have they? Okay, so the funding first before they do it.
They don't want to invest in that if they're not gonna be able to, to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is kind of like, that part of it, it's already been closed, don't invest that, I mean, you know what, maybe if it's three of that.
Oh, keep going, if you keep going west, yes, it was closed, because that's where Smith Provisions now is. Yeah, so there's no through traffic that is blocked off.
But did we do that, we closed off?
Years ago, yeah.
Years ago.
Yeah, when Smith moved, so I was, actually worked on that deal. When Smith moved from Bill Creek to the city, it was 2012. And at that point, come a loop around and come back, it's, it's an open field and there was no, it led to nowhere, so it's closed off. So this stretch of 20th Street, right in front of Rarick, there's no real reason for anybody other than Rarick to use that one block.
It's almost a death row. I mean, it's not like.
Like you, like you would have, you would have no reason to drive down if you were there.
No, we're all going to drive by them.
No, you will, you will.
Well, the backside, we'll live on the backs, so it's.
So I, so I'll get it, I'll get it on agenda, then I'll, if that's okay, and then I'll talk to him tomorrow, and that's.
So what was being done with the field, because obviously this is a great space that's being lost, so.
No, it was a private property owned by Boys Baseball. And they couldn't get enough kids to play anymore. I got a 10-year badge for being down there. I think it was always a commercial site that they just let the field be on.
Yeah.
There's actually soccer fields not too far away from that area.
Great.
Across the street.
Yeah, very good field, baseball field. Okay, thank you. I'll work on it.
Thank you. I have a lot more, it's been a while.
Yeah, because you're going to need addresses. You're going to send.